If you have to go, I know it's it's five, almost six o'clock already, so. And I know you've been at work since I went to work this morning, so.
Just text me if you need anything, I'm around.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Bye.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a quorum between you and me. Perhaps we could go ahead with at least the first four items on the agenda?
May I ask, just, there's one person who's an attendee, I don't know who they are, it's the phone number that ends in 2814.
That's Tom McLaughlin. I have an application for the Shellfish Commission, I'm standing by here.
Thank you, sir. It's Mr. McLaughlin, okay.
Okay, alright, so I'll call to order the Tuesday, September 15th Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting at 5:39. Uh, councillor, uh, committee members present are councillor Melendez and councillor Zepiri. Also present is Mayor Granatowski. Does anybody have anything from calendars and communications?
No, no report.
Okay, same.
May I speak at this point, Chairman Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we have a vacancy that needs to be filled on the tourism, District of Eastern Connecticut Tourism, the regional state entity. And I've been trying to get councillor Heed appointed to it, and we've been hitting roadblock after roadblock. And now, um, what we need to do, they will not take an appointment from me. They need it to be from the legislative body of the town. So what's gonna have to happen, please, if you will, if it so pleases your committee, if you would nominate councillor Heed to fill that vacancy, pass it through Personnel and Appointments, then we could put it on the council meeting, excuse me, for the first Tuesday in October, and get councillor Heed appointed that evening, and then hopefully they will accept him at the October meeting. So that's why I'm here, just to make that request, if you please.
Okay. Alright.
And I think Ms. Hilton, place that on your agenda, if I'm not mistaken?
Uh, yes, it looks like, let me see here. Um, yeah, yep, it's the second, it's the second thing on new business.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Alright, uh, now, moving on to the approval of minutes, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes, uh, for the Thursday, August 18, 2020 meeting.
Okay, I will second. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries unanimously 2-0-0. Okay, on to new business. Uh, first we have 2020 590 Boards and Commission Member Recognition. So, there is no, uh, motion, but just background, the Personnel Appointments Committee will discuss a policy to award Board Commission Members' recognition for their service to the town when resigning or retiring from their position. Now, councillor Zepiri, if it's alright with you, since this was councillor Heed's idea, do, would you like to, uh, wait until he's here to discuss it?
I think we, my own feeling is that he was in favor of it. We did discuss it at the last meeting, and I would like to just move to pass it up to the council, because the council will have to decide whether or not it's willing to, uh, appropriate funds for, uh, purchasing of plaques, if that's what we're gonna do, or to, uh, give some sort of a proclamation or certificate of some sort.
Okay, um, can I just ask the mayor, uh, do, would we work out the details in the council? Because we're all in favor of this, uh, we don't have a draft motion here. Um, we talked a little bit in, in, uh, other business about this last month, um, but we didn't like, have any details, like, in stone. So, should we just sort of pass this saying we're in favor of it, and then work out the details in the council? Or should we do that here?
Since it's flexible at this point, why don't you recommend it to Committee of the Whole? And then that would give the Committee of the Whole the opportunity to, um, work out those details with you, under your advisement. Whereas if you had something set that was ready to go, that all the details were lined up, then I would say go straight to council. But since it's still kind of flexible, I would say pass it through your committee and send it on to Cal. I think that would be an easy solution.
Okay, so.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, make a referral to the Committee of the Whole, for consideration of initiation of a policy, uh, to give recognition to, uh, uh, members of, uh, boards and commissions of the town of Groton, as they retire from their position.
Okay, and I will second that. Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously 2-0-0. Uh, hold on one second, councillor Heed is calling me, actually. Okay, I'm back, he'll be on the meeting, uh, shortly. So, so let's just skip to 22619, various appointments, reappointments for August and September. Um, who? Okay, let's start with, uh, Thomas McLaughlin for the Shellfish Commission.
Is he here, is he present now?
He is, I'm just, um, give me one second. Trying to.
Hello?
On the phone. Mister McLaughlin?
Yeah, speaking.
Okay, Mister McLaughlin is here with you. He is the, um, the 2814 phone number.
Correct.
Welcome, um, so, uh, we have your application here, and usually we just open it up for people who have questions, so.
Okay.
Mister McLaughlin, can you tell us why you wanna be on this commission?
Well, I have spent my lifetime on the water. Ten or eleven years, I was the first instructor of project oceanology, and then for the past forty years, I've been a charter boat captain. So I'm obviously very interested in the marine environment, and would just like to, uh, do what I can to make sure it's developed, developed properly and, take care of it.
You say you've been a charter boat captain?
That's correct.
Can you tell me about that a bit?
Sorry?
Can you tell us about that a bit?
Uh, my boat is called the Matara. It's, uh, located in Noank, the first dock south of, uh, Ford's Lobsters there. And I've been running out of the, uh, Noank area for the last forty years. And I really couldn't, you know, participate in something like this while I was chartering, but I retired this year, so I have the time to do it, so.
Okay.
And I have a pretty good marine background, I think.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I would move to approve, uh, Thomas McLaughlin for, uh, uh, position on, as an alternate on the Shellfish Commission.
Okay, I'll second. Um, and all I'll say is, um, yeah, I, I looked at your resume, you seem very highly qualified. Um, I just wanna thank you to, um, for coming out and, and volunteering to do this. Since councillor Heed is not here, he, he, I'll just speak for him, cuz he normally says to everybody that, he just reminds everybody that showing up to the meetings is, is very important, because, uh, um, if, if they don't have a quorum, then, then they can't do any, any, uh, any business. So, I'll just say that for him, cuz I know he always says that.
Yeah, okay.
But if there's no other discussion, uh, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions? That vote carries unanimously 2-0-0. Okay.
Mister, Mister McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, sir.
This is a little bit awkward, but thank you very much. G'day.
Okay, next is, uh, David Hale, is he here?
Um, Mister Hale is here, um, under Cynthia Cassart's name.
Okay, welcome. Uh, do, and.
Next time here.
Alright, he's, you're also applying for the Shellfish Commission?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and, uh, councillors of Perry, do you have any questions?
Uh, I know David for a long time, uh, so I don't have any questions of him, uh. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, Mister Hale, uh, I guess I'll just ask, um, why you want to be part of the Shellfish Commission?
Well, I've been, uh, a recreational shell fisherman in Groton since I was a teenager, and that puts that number to be over fifty years. And I've, I've always been interested in, you know, the conservation of the resources and stuff, and, um, I've also been, I've, I've tried to get on board, would help and dump the, uh, the purchased seed clams in, you know, to lend a hand doing that, um, but that, that never seemed to happen, they always seemed to have enough help, and they never called. But, uh, I've always been pretty civic minded, I served in the city, uh, on a city council for twelve years, and currently, and for eight other years, I was, uh, on the zoning board of appeals in Groton, I just, you know, believe that we should be doing our part to help our cities and towns run, and, uh, that's just basically it. Just helping out the community, really.
Alright.
Well, sir. Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you for coming out and volunteering to, to, to be a part of this commission. Um, so if there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That vote carries unanimously 2-0-0. Alright.
Thank you, Mister Hale.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Roger Sherman as a reappointment to the Shellfish Commission. Uh, I, I don't.
Sherman is not here.
Yes, uh, we don't, cuz he's a reappointment. So, they don't typically show up, so, uh, do I hear a motion for Roger Sherman?
Move to approve Roger Sherman to continue on the Shellfish Commission.
Okay, I'll second that, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, that motion carries unanimously 2-0-0. Uh, okay. Um, next we'll take Hugh Barton, Barton as a reappointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, uh, the reappointment of, uh, Hugh Barton to the Water Pollution Control.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That vote carries unanimously 2-0-0. Okay, and. Yes.
I'm having a hard time finding it again in my agenda, but there was someone who had to be moved from, uh, a alternate position to, uh, a full commission position on the Shellfish Commission, I think.
Yeah, so I think what happened was, we, we made a mistake last month. And we, we misunderstood what we were supposed to do, there's an email chain in here. Uh, let me try and understand, uh, I believe that was David Hale.
David's an original appointment to the Shellfish Commission as a marketing. I think.
Okay, let me. Oh yeah, you're right, you're right, hold on, I'm trying to understand this, uh, this email chain. Okay, so on the Shellfish Commission, last, last month, we had Joseph Kane and Craig Tobias and their alternates. Um, okay, and Craig Tobias is moving into a full-time slot. And I believe Joseph Kane was gonna stay as alternate, and last month, I believe the issue was, last month, uh, we moved Joseph Kane into a full membership, and, and he wasn't wanting to be. Oh, uh, councillor Heed's here, maybe he knows what, what it was. Let me see.
I just promoted councillor Heed to panelist.
Okay.
Hello, Conrad. Crying, sorry, I'm. I need a watch.
Yeah, that's a gaslight too, I forgot it was 5:30, I get so used to 6:30. Um, do, do you remember, do you know what the issue was with the Shellfish Commission appointments we did last month?
Uh, oh, yes. We, we put two people up, uh, to move them from temporary to permanent, but only one of them wanted to be moved. Uh, and the other one didn't. So.
Okay, yeah, that's what I.
One issue, and, uh, is I understand that we only have the two applications, Tom McLaughlin and David, is that right?
Yeah, so. Yeah, we only had those two. Well, and, and we had a reappointment of Roger Sherman.
Oh, yes. Okay, good. Um, did he, was, was that requested, is that in this email chain?
I didn't see.
We voted on all of those already, Conrad, we've approved them.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have one person left, so we'll, we can move on to that.
Okay.
Okay, um, the appointment of William Ferguson for the historic district commission.
I think he's here.
He's here, okay, welcome, uh.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll just open it up for questions.
Mister Ferguson, I, uh, I understand that you're involved with the, what is it, the, it's the commercial organization down, downtown Mystic at present?
Uh, yes, it's, it's called the Downtown Mystic Merchants Association, it's.
And would that, how would that relate to the Historic District Commission?
Um, I don't see a direct relationship between the two. Uh, they're both volunteer positions, but the Downtown Mystic Merchants is all about promoting, events and people to come to downtown to shop, eat, and, uh, play, as, as our three buzzwords are. The historic district position I see is more keeping the, the town with the same, uh, I guess, feel and, and not let, uh, any, any, uh, I guess, renovations or, or, or adjustments or, you know, changes to homes. Excuse my language, but bastardize the town, so.
Would, would the Historic District Commission have any effect on the, uh, changes to the structures in downtown Mystic, uh, merchant area? Main Street, West Main Street, particularly?
Um, for me, if that, obviously if that situation arose, I'd have to, um, you know, abstain from, from participating in the vote, but, um, I, I don't see that as something happening in the near future, with all the renovations that have happened, obviously recently with Main Block and, or Central Block, and, and, um, you know, just the, the, the tenants are very happy with the way the buildings are, and I don't foresee that as an issue personally. But obviously, if it comes up and I'm involved, I'm still involved, I mean, I'm president, this is my first year, it's only a two-year term, so it's not like, I'm an emperor and stay there forever, so.
Thank you.
Hello, I see somebody new now.
Uh, yeah, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask a question, I have, uh, I've got a, I'm looking for your resume, your application, and, uh, give me a moment to find it, but, uh, I remember reading it, and I thought that you, that it sounded very impressive. Um, are you in any way, um, a developer or, um, involved in construction?
I am not, I'm a fundraiser for the Mystic Museum of Art. I, I ask people for money to support nonprofits, and so, I do that for the DMM, and I do that for the museum. So, dough, I am not a developer, I don't think you want me with a hammer and a set of nails personally, so.
Something said for me. Yeah, I can appreciate that, so, um, you know, one thing that I don't remember seeing on the, the resume, uh, was, uh, how long you've lived in, uh, the Mystic area.
Okay, so I, um.
So, how long have you lived in the area?
So, I graduated Connecticut College in 1994 and moved to Mystic in 1995. And I've lived, uh, I've lived in two houses, one I needed to go before the Historic District Commission, uh, way back when, in the late nineties, it was a very different organization. And then the past couple of years, I've been going in front of it to support, uh, for example, Adam and his work at SIFT, and things like that, and so, um, I've become familiar with the board by being a, a witness or supporter of other people.
Good, good, thank you, I, I think that sounds good to me, um, I, I also, I say it to everybody, I just remind you that half the job, uh, is to show up to the meetings so that they can have a quorum. Um, so, as, you know, I think you already understand that you have a track record, so I'm, I'm happy to see that. So, yeah, I have, I have no other questions, though.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak, mayor?
Um, I, I am not a member of the committee, um, but thank you for recognizing me, Chairman Melendez. I'm just curious, um, about Mister Ferguson's take on the property on Binless Road that, the Mystic Art Association has title to right now, and what your sentiment is regarding the preservation of that property in light of your, um, desire to be appointed to a Historic District Commission.
Um, well, I first want to, as the Director of External Affairs of the Mystic Museum, I'm gonna put that hat on for a second and just say that, um, there's a lot more to what people have read about this past week, um, in the paper. I, we had that property sold at one point to a buyer who was gonna renovate it perfectly, back to what it was, and we, as a museum, couldn't have been happier about that, um, but, but there's obviously been a, a title challenge, as you read in the paper. And, um, we, the, the buyer backed out because didn't wanna buy something, and then all of a sudden have a person come in and say, this is really my house, not yours, after they bought it, so. Um, my personal feelings, I love that house, I, I mean, if I had the means, I would purchase the home, cuz it's got so much charm and character, and obviously history. But, um, I think it's from a Historic District Commission, it needs a lot of work, and then, and it, it needs someone to come in there and, and have the eye to keep it intact, but also to make sure it doesn't fall down around them. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's, that's my response.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve, uh, Bill Ferguson for membership on the Mystic Historic District Commission.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So is that one in, uh, one in favor and one opposed?
I don't, I'm, I'm in favor, and I don't think anyone else would say that, opposed. Are you opposed, Conrad?
I've got slow internet, so it may just take a while for it to come through. But no, I'm in favor.
That's good.
That motion carries unanimously 3-0-0. Uh, okay, so, lastly, we have.
So, am I free to exit?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time tonight, and thank you for your work for the town.
Mister Ferguson, you may, uh, wanna know the, the process, how this works, so this will go to our town council meeting, which is the first Tuesday in October. Uh, the council will vote on it, and then after that, Betsy McCauser will call you to swear you in.
Excellent, thank you. Yep, alright, alright, I look forward to the, hopefully that, those next two steps in the process, so.
Thank you, Mister Ferguson.
Thank you, nice meeting you all tonight, take care.
Okay, now on to our final, uh, item, 22618 miscellaneous ad hoc appointment, Eastern Connecticut Tourism District. Um, and I'll make a motion to appoint councillor Conrad Heed to the Eastern Connecticut Tourism District. Is there a second?
Uh, Mister, Mister Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, the mayor just told us that this has to be, um, an appointment, uh, designated by the town council. So, we should be making a referral to the, uh, uh, Cal, uh, for them to make the appointment.
May I, may I speak, Chairman Melendez?
Yeah.
No.
Um, it would be most expedient if the personnel and appoint, anything that comes to the council has to go through a committee. Um, this is a committee, so if you guys pass it out of this committee, it can go to directly, it can go directly to council, and at that point. And at that point, then the council can vote and we can get a representative on that tourism board. That would be the most expedient way to do this. And that, that would be my personal preference. I don't know what your preference is as a committee, but that's what I would ask you to do, please.
And I would change my motion to, uh, refer this to the council for the approval of, uh, Conrad Heed as a member of the, uh, as a representative to the Eastern Connecticut Tourism District.
Okay, I'll second. Councillor Heed, would you like, uh, this appointment?
Uh, well, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in tourism. It's sort of been my career for the last, I don't know, twenty-four, twenty-six years, uh, in working in the hotel industry, um, and, and tourism. I've been, um, speaking with Rita Schmidt quite a bit about, um, what goes on during these meetings. So she's given me some good background. Um, and I've actually attended a couple of the meetings. So I, I've had, I have some interest and, and I think it'll be a good fit. I think I can bring something to the table, so. Um, I hope I'm successful and if there's a better person out there, I would at least step aside, but, um, I think, uh, I think I'm, I'll be good for this, so I'm looking forward to it.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That vote carries unanimously three zero zero. All right, uh, under review of agenda items, I don't think we have anything. Um, so we'll move on to other business. Does anybody have any other business?
Uh, just a, a follow-up, uh, last time we talked about, uh, awarding, uh, something who have served on boards and commissions, so when they retire or resign from the commission to just recognize them. Um, we had talked about, um, putting that at this time. So I'm, I know we can't talk about it, but just wanted to remind us that, uh, to get it on for next time.
Yeah, it was actually on this agenda, um, so what we did was we referred it to the Cal. So instead of deciding everything here, we're gonna do it at the Cal. So anything other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Favor to adjourn.
All right, that carries unanimously. I'll see you. Thank you, Mayor, for, uh, helping us out.
You're welcome. Good night. I'm gonna stop the recording now.
All right.
Thank you.